Monday, August 5th, 2024, Inkster City Council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand. Prayer first. Okay. Pastor Oldman, can you lead us in prayer?
Father, we thank you this evening for your amazing grace and your love. We thank you for those that you have given the lead and charge for the city of Inkster, our mayor and our council, all of the administrative staff that supports them, and the residents that live, work, and play in the city of Inkster. We are so grateful for the hearts that they have, that they will continue to do what is best for all of us, and we thank you that we have the opportunity to serve one another in love. Amen.
Please keep standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a call.
Everybody, take a look at the agenda. We're gonna add, under presentation, art gala featuring Ted Ellis. Anything else we need to add or delete? That makes sense. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Police chief, I hear you got something to say.
Mayor, council, residents of the city of Inkster, I would like to introduce our new director of community relations, Lisa Bernie. We just wanted to take this opportunity so that you all can meet her, get acquainted with her. She'll be handling a lot of our community events. Like tomorrow, we have National Night Out at the Police Department. Please come out, bring your kids, join us. We have free food, games, and we're gonna have a good time. And live entertainment.
Thank you. All right. Pastor Oldman. Come with your presentation.
I'm so excited, guys. I have a whole portfolio here and lots of exciting news about Ted Ellis and who he is and what he does. And most of you are very familiar with Operation Refuge and the work that we do. And this is an actual art gala. This is from the Michigan Chronicle, and it tells a lot about Ted's story and who he is and how his art has the power to touch souls. So I want us to really take a look at the article. And I have so much stuff, I don't wanna read it all, but I wanted to do a fair presentation because Ted Ellis is nationally acclaimed. He's the person that did the Obama work and the John Lewis work that is at the White House. He sold millions of dollars in art, and I met him on the Tom Jerner cruise for HBCUs. And he said, "Of course, I will come to your community if you can promise to bring your children out and let them experience art." And I said, "I could do that." So on August the 23rd and the 24th, we will be doing both of those things. The VIP is the 23rd when we will have our 12th district thing. So I know we're gonna be kinda split being leaders in so many things, but for those residents that can be there, I appreciate you being there. We don't wanna bring a nationally acclaimed artist to our community, and our community isn't there. So please, if we can be there, let's be there. And then on Saturday morning, we want to do something special with the children of the city of Inkster, where he's gonna do some canvas work with them, and they will have an autograph from Ted Ellis. Now, when we think about art and we think about culture and we think about community, when you look at the very best of communities, what we call best practices, you have to have culture. You have to have the arts, you have to have education, safety and economic empowerment. When I think about what just happened at the NFL Draft, as a city comes together to ensure its successes, the outcomes are phenomenal. This is an opportunity for Inkster to become phenomenal. We already have coverage with Michigan Chronicle, all the newspapers. Can we spread the word ourselves? Can we make sure that we're well represented? So I have all this presentation, but I think I touched all the key points. It's our opportunity to take advantage of something that can be nothing but success for the city of Inkster. So thank you.
Thank you.
And get this article on the Michigan Chronicle and our website. Well, thank you.
Can you text and email us your flyer as well so we can start putting on our...
Yes, actually, thank you. That is my Operation Refuge City Councilperson. I actually blessed you with a prayer. To our code.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's move down to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move this to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Carolyn Wilson to the condemnation board.
Support.
We're probably moving to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Angeline Lawrence from District 4 to the Parks and Recs Commission.
All right. It's been properly moved to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
And I make a motion to appoint James Eberhart from District 4 to the Downtown Development Authority.
So moved. Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Move down to new business. Second, second.
Consider approval of street closure, block party, Operation Refuge art gala, featuring Ted Ellis, August 23rd and 24th. Time, 7:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Location, 27741 Carlisle, Cross Streets, Carlisle and Henry.
So moved. Second.
They're probably moving to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of the Robichaud All Class Picnic, Robichaud Reunion, date, August 31st, 2024, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Place, Tyrone Wheatley Park on Penn Street.
So moved.
Support.
Probably move to supportive discussion. We have to acknowledge Mr. Hall here, Mr. James Hall, for coming out. You know, he's the Inkster legend, so. You just wanna say hi?
Thank you for having us. We are pending. This will be our upcoming 13th year. Something that's been a blessing in the community. We are Robichaud in the Dearborn Heights. However, it is, our performance happens in the park, in Tyrone Wheatley Park. It's been a blessing to our community. We do a number of great things for our community and our families. My family goes back to 1948. An older brother and this friend of mine right here is a 1960 graduate of Roosevelt. My brother in 1960.
That's Councilwoman Nancy Bright.
Yes, it is.
All right. Dearborn Heights, y'all.
At that point in time, Mayor, my older brother also was a class of 1959. The high school was called Inkster Roosevelt at that time. Of course, sitting within the Inkster city limits at that point in time.
Oh, okay.
Nonetheless, what we're doing is it's a collection of alumni from Robichaud High School and historic Westwood Community Schools with the intent of maintaining, nurturing, and fulfilling their wonderful legacy of academic arts, music, sports, spiritual, community service through an annual picnic reunion celebration. This event will embody the spirit, pride, diversity, and camaraderie of our student body from its origins, from 1960 to the present. And we hope we can be blessed to continue that. It's been a wonderful marriage between our high school and the city of Inkster. Mr. Bevins, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. We really appreciate that, as well as the other council members, so.
Great, it's good to see you, both of you, and welcome.
We're not asking for any money, but if...
That's why we're all smiling, Lee.
Yes. However, if you would let us use the park at a very reduced fee, we'd be very appreciative.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes, thank you.
Thank you, God bless you.
Very much.
Consider to adopt one notice of intent resolution and two bond authorizing ordinance to provide for the acquisition, construction, installation, furnishing, and equipping of additions and improvements to the water supply and sewage disposal system of the city, and authorize the city clerk to publish the notices of intent to issue bonds for water supply and sewage disposal system improvements.
So moved.
Second. They're probably moving to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider adopt ordinance to amend the bond authorizing ordinance previously adopted relative to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program.
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moving to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider the approval of the special land use for a proposed childcare center in the B2 theraphere mixed-use district at 337 Inkster Road.
So moved. Support.
They're probably moving to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the east side of Inkster Road between Michigan Avenue and Norfolk Street. Parcel ID noted.
So moved. Second. They're probably moving to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Midtown Road and Henry Roth. Parcel ID noted, and the amount of $100,000. See attached Wayne County records.
So moved. Second. Second.
They're probably moving to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Three that way and three...
So moved. Do you roll?
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Oh, not me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Nay.
Councilman Bishop.
Nay.
Councilwoman Scott.
Nay.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
It's the first time in history, y'all. The mayor only votes when it's a tie, and I have not voted yet this term. I'm gonna vote yea. There you go. All right, we're on the public participation. Pastor Rick Skyler. Pastor Rick here. He leads.
Nay.
Sleep. Please stop.
Sorry, Sykes.
Sykes, I'm sorry, couldn't read anything. Pastor Sykes. Pastor Snipes, Sykes. Elena Hall. Good evening, good evening.
No, I'm here.
I know, I do.
I've talked to you twice, I've talked to Mr. Chisholm, I've talked to Ms. Scott, and the city ordinance came out June 17th. He told me to give him seven to 10 days. He walked in my yard, my yard is all concrete. There's poison ivy coming through the fence. I had to go to the hospital for that because my face swelled up from the poison ivy, just walking in my yard when I was with you. Okay? You told me that my neighbors say they're elderly and have health problems. Guess what I do to? And they're contributing more to my health problems because of their negligence. When they start saying they have health problems, I've been in that house 25 years. You know what I do? I start playing my violin because all they do is claim health problems and they do not... I've never seen where they're upheld, I mean, for just being negligent.
I did, you, last time we spoke, a couple weeks ago, right?
Yes.
You told me to go to your house. I did go there. I did see it with my own eyes. It was ridiculous.
And it stinks 'cause there's something dead over there.
I've talked to DPS about it, and they were gonna go out and cut it last week, and then I don't think they answered, so I was gonna go over there and make sure I get their, like, permission to do it, 'cause they can't just go in their backyard and cut it. But we did, like, we have spoken to DPS, and they said, like, they do go cut some people's loans that may not be able to. So they are willing to do so. We just not have to get in touch with your neighbors to give us that permission to get back.
Okay, but how long am I supposed to wait? I came June 17th, that's when the ordinance came to my house. June 17th is almost, almost, the summer's over. So how much longer am I supposed to wait? Everybody's putting me on the back burner. I can't even go in my yard. I go in my yard, my face start itching. You know, my face swollen up. They're causing me health problems, but I should acknowledge their health problems. They are just lazy. They have brush all in the gutters in their house. There's brush coming all through my gate, and I can't sit back there. So what am I to do? Just not being able to live in my house?
No. When I came back after visiting your house, I told the ordinance officer, "Go back the same day." And if they couldn't get it done in 24 hours to issue a citation. So I just texted him to see if he actually issued the citation. If he did, sometimes it takes two months before you get to court, so it may not help you today. But we will go over to knock on the door tomorrow. It needs to be sickled, it can't be cut. It's that hot.
Yes.
So let's get somebody over there in the morning, see if we can catch them there to get permission to chop that stuff down.
They're not gonna answer the door, they never answer the door. And I have company coming Thursday, come out of town, and I can't even... You know, my house is small, my driveway is small, I don't even have a tree in my yard, nothing but concrete.
I saw it.
But my neighbor told me, she said, "You take more, drag more bags out to the curb than anybody in the court." Because my neighbors don't, their garbage comes on my side. And I'm really about tired of it.
What address are we talking about?
Frederick Court.
I think it's 3928 Frederick Court.
I'll try to go by there as well. I was gonna say, like, if you can do, like, a wellness check or something, if they're not answering, just to try to get it resolved.
They're there, because I was in the yard yesterday, just watering my flowers that I was able to save, and she was in her car with the door open, laughing out loud, I guess, trying to, you know...
So we're gonna try to rectify it on that.
Okay.
We'll jump on it tomorrow, thank you. Sorry about that. Jason Dixon. Good, it's 3928.
Good evening. I think there's been a great mistake going on here. So I purchased the Inkster Old City Hall in March of 2023. And we had a long discussion about this because the building has been rented since 1962, from top to bottom. Mowed from top to bottom. Mowed on the carpet. So, you know, how long do you think it's supposed to take me to get that, you know, completed? So we did get that completed, and we had a discussion when we purchased the property about that opportunity, how long those things would take. And anyone in their right mind knows it takes longer than 180 days to remediate their property. And we talked about that. And what they assured me, based on the things that we're doing with the city, that we wouldn't have a problem with that. And also, that's a boilerplate to make sure the 180-day rule goes into effect in most governments to make sure a person does work on a property, right? And everyone in the city sees us have programs, ongoing traffic, moving things in and out the location. We talk to Dee on a regular basis, 'cause she's our city councilperson, and that's what we were told to do during this process. Then the socioeconomic piece of our process, process to bring broadband to the community. This is crazy because the University of Michigan is the number one social work school in the world, right? They're our partner. We brought that partner to Inkster. That's a value. We now have a partner with Tony Reams from the School of Sustainability that they just built in the city of Detroit, that they wasn't supposed to go to any other city but the city of Detroit. But we coerced them to come to Inkster because of the program that we have. So I'm trying to understand who talked about saying that they wanted to sue us to take a building back when we're bringing all this value. The next thing we have, we still have a partnership with Nokia. We just got a partnership with Waze, which is one of the largest electrical companies in the world. They're a teaming partner, we had the letters. U of M's doing a capstone project, and most of the time, small cities like Inkster doesn't get a capstone project when you talk about sustainability. We have to go to the table and have those discussions, we do, that's a cost. And you wanna sue me to take a building back that we've already remediated without even contacting me? I mean, that's crazy. We talk about we wanna build our community and have economic development and have opportunity for black folks, and we talk about reducing the wealth gap in America. I'm a partner, I'm a national partner with the Kellogg Foundation to do this. We're in Milwaukee, Mississippi, and Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Get your masks up.
Oh, okay.
James Richardson.
Yes, I'm James Richardson and husband of Dee, Richardson, Councilwoman. I just got one question about our school debt. In the wintertime, closer to the winter, we had that debt, we had a ceremony that, for that debt to be relieved. A couple of months, it hasn't come off our bills. So I asked my wife, she didn't know why it's not off. And so we found that a gentleman, there's only a certain area in District 6 that's paying that debt, but school debt, it's only District 6 is paying that school debt. And I just wonder why, how it's gonna be paid to us? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be put back in our, if it's gonna be put back in our bill or not? And how is that gonna be done? And I noticed that we talked to a young man in Westland, his debt has been taken off, and they not paying the debt.
In Westland?
Yeah, Westland. Inkster debt is part of Westland too, because it's an area of Westland, north of Annapolis. So I just need to know how that's gonna be taken care of.
I didn't know District 6 residents were still paying Inkster school debt.
Yes, it's still on our...
Or it's being taken out, that's what you're saying.
The debt has been paid off. It's still been taken out. Our...
We'll have to check the specific locations, but I do know that there are some areas of the city, depending upon the school district, where that school district has some, there's some debt associated with that school district. And so what happened is during the time that the Inkster High, the Inkster school debt was still on the tax rolls, those residents in those particular areas were being held harmless. They weren't paying that debt tied to the, you know, tied to their existing school district. So once the Inkster school district got taken off, that, those residents then had that replaced by the debt tied to their existing school district. So for the last several years, they were being held harmless. Remember, we had that legal case where the neighboring school did, or the school district for certain areas of the city wanted to apply that to the residents, and they were found to be held harmless from that because the Inkster school debt was still on the book. So once that Inkster school debt got relieved, they were then now subject to that. But I will have to check the exact case.
Can you send us copy of your tax real? Oh, we got it, we, we know your...
I said have a copy.
Yeah, we have a copy. Let's take a look at it, make sure that's what it is.
Okay. But thanks.
All right, thank you. Gloria Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of Inkster. I'm calling, coming here before council to find out what's going on with our garbage pickup. And I didn't know that I was gonna be the first one to let you record, but I'm certain that other residents are feeling, you know, the sting as well. So can you help us out and let us know what, when we can expect an improvement?
Well, I can, it's a day by day. We've been communicating with them daily. I think a couple weeks ago, they almost caught up, then got behind again. We got a text this morning, Monday is my garbage day, so I sent my garbage out. I think my garbage still sitting there. They said, "We're gonna do Friday today, and hopefully we'll get Monday tomorrow," which means Tuesday will be one. So they have not caught back up. They're just failing because they took on too much. I saw an article last week, I think I shared with folks, or shared on social media, that basically they thought that 60 trucks need to be fixed, and ended up being 200 trucks. When they bought GFL, they bought all the trucks, and I think they're taking the employees too. So now they're trying to fix 200 trucks, that means they don't have enough trucks. They took over 19 cities.
Do you have an attorney?
And us, Dearborn, we're all catching it. I think Garden City's doing better than us, right? No, Westland's doing, Westland was a prior account. I saw some of the news last week, I think the Dearborn mayor said he's not paying the bill. Trying to get their attention, I mean, 'cause the bottom line is we gotta have the garbage picked up. So it's not as easy as, like, firing them and going to Walmart and picking up a new garbage company. There's basically only two in this arena. Their contract is up next year, so this is really, this is in the forefront of my mind. We set out a RFP, but essentially, we only have two companies, one likely bid on this, unless Waste Management comes back into this territory, which right now, they're not. So it's almost a monopoly, and they really took on too much. I don't know, I would hate to tell you a date that I have no reason to believe is gonna be true.
Well, my pickup day is Thursday. Our garbage was finally picked up on, was it Saturday? On Saturday. That was garbage. The recyclables were picked up today, which is Monday from Thursday. So, you know, and the yard waste is still sitting.
Still sitting there?
Yes.
It's a mess. We call them every day. "Oh, we're gonna get out there, we're gonna take care of it." They can't take it. I saw an interview of the CEO this weekend on the news, and he was basically, he was arguing like it was a political thing because they ran his interview with the Dearborn mayor's statement. They're like, "What are you doing, the garbage not get picked up?" He's like, "It's only late one day." That was his response, and I was sitting there shaking my head, like... I mean, they're trying to protect their brand and public perception of them.
Their brand is not worth two pennies at this point. And because when GFL was picking up the garbage, it was picked up on the day it was supposed to be picked up.
You right. You right. I mean, I agree with everything you said, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, we're definitely on, we're not saying, okay.
This was the place to find out what the latest was, so that's why I'm here.
No, we've been posting articles and trying to let people know we're communicating with them, but... So is 19 other cities yelling and screaming? They can't do it, they just not gonna... They can't do it. They just not gonna do it. What, what are we gonna do? So we can, we can burn it. We can take the trash somewhere. I'm, I'm joking. Don't say the mayor said burn the trash. But we're already looking at the R F P for next year. We're gonna start on that in January.
Well, hopefully some new people come into play.
Unless y'all wanna start your own company? We are looking at some recycling, um, opportunities for the city to make money. We gotta buy a few trucks. How much trucks cost? Two hundred fifty thousand a piece?
Half a million.
Half a million? How many we need to do the city? Six, five? We gotta sell a lot of chicken dinners to get that. But, but it, it's definitely crossed our mind, you know? I don't know where we getting ten, ten to fifteen million? No problem. We work, we, we, we feel your pain because we're all feeling it together. Um, we'll stay on them. I mean, I'm hoping they get these trucks fixed and get on at some point. It's been a month. It's been a whole month now. Painful month. That is crazy. Dr. Jones. I thought I saw Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones probably has a solution for the garbage situation.
Who's trying to set me up like that? Every time I come up and you tell the people. That wasn't even my thing.
About three minutes and it started. Just started.
All right. So that the last city council meeting, uh, we talked, I talked a little bit about some of the voter engagement things that we're going to be doing. And there was a lot of people who said they want to partner and we are excited about it. So wanted to come back with, um, as promised with some more tangible things. I don't know why I thought we was gonna meet two weeks from there, but it's always every two weeks, but it's really the first and third. So a couple of things, our actual official, uh, voter engagement kickoff is going to be on August twenty fourth. We know there's a lot of things happening in the city that day, uh, so we're gonna try to partner with as many folks as we possibly can partner with for that event. Our actual candidate forum where we are inviting all the candidates who are looking to secure the vote. Here in Inkster and Western Wayne County is going to be on September nineteenth from six to eight P M. And you will receive a formal invitation from us. What you have before you is the start of it. Um, yes, yes.
Thank you.
So what you have before you is a little bit of myths and facts on voting. Um, some of the things that we have discovered in our get out the vote efforts is that folks are being lied to. Folks are finding out that they're being unregistered, um, to vote. This is people's first time to vote. So we have decided to start with providing resources to people to make sure you have exactly what you need. You don't have to, you don't have to Google it. You don't have to find it. You don't have to phone a friend. Just take your, your Q R code, scan it. Scan your grandkid's phone, whatever you have, we trying to put it right in people's hands. So you'll see more, um, of this happening. Um, throughout between now and the next, probably, I think we're at like eighty-nine days until the election. So, um, on September seventeenth, we will be doing, we will be canvassing in the community. So if anyone would like to join us as well, you are more than welcome to join us. It, it'll be quite a bit of A K As in this area. So we have a couple of other chapters who are willing to partner with us. So it'll probably be a bunch of us, um, on that day. And also in September, we're going to do a movie and a discussion where we would love to have women in politics. Come and join us in that conversation. We're gonna be doing a screening of the movie Shirley. And talking about women's positions in politics, uh, what that looks like and the challenges that are faced. Uh, to not only black women, but those who are, uh, voting as well. So outside of that, October will be slightly lighter. And then we'll have a couple of different poll parties and those things like polling parties, not an actual poll party, but polling parties, um, in November and just. And I knew it. And when I said it, I said. I'm not signing us up for nothing else extra. No more extra, extra fitness. So. Looking for, um, so hopefully you all will join us, um, in us being able to help each other because we know how important this election is.
Thank you. Peggy Bishop Lucas. And Octavia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Citizens of Inkster. We are here to announce a sixtieth birthday party for the city of Inkster. It's gonna be held November second, uh, two thousand twenty-four at the Blitz Event Center. At three zero two two five Cherry Hill from six to nine. Tickets are fifty dollars in advance. And we're here on behalf of the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. We'd like everyone to come out and celebrate with us. The city of Inkster became a city sixty years ago and we want to celebrate and we hope you all can make it. Uh, to join in the celebration with us.
Um, greetings, Mayor, Council and Residents. We also are doing a souvenir booklet for this event. This year, we will not be doing a calendar because we have been told the city is doing a calendar. So we do not wish to bump heads. So we want, we're not gonna, we're gonna forego that, but we are doing a souvenir booklet for this sixtieth birthday party. So again, I hope that you guys are able to participate and come out and just celebrate because this is not the chamber. This is the city of Inkster's event. So we look forward to celebrating all of us together. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Patrice Bridges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council and residents of Eastland, Michigan. My name is Patrice Bridges. I'm a part of Strategic Alliance with Jason Dixon. I came here this afternoon to speak on behalf of the initiative of Strategic Alliance. One of the observations I've made sitting down in the audience is hearing the residents continually complain. About marijuana facilities, um, being, um, birthed here in the city of Inkster. Also, I've he, heard people complain about the trash not being picked up. I know that, um, having a lawsuit costs the residents money. It costs you money. Money comes out of your pockets for a lawsuit. And so with that being said, this, the state of Michigan has been granted. One point seven billion dollars for broadband. And what an amazing opportunity for Inkster. The city hall has set in rumbles, just emerged in water. And the citizens' records weren't even handled properly with, with driver's license, social security numbers and credit cards. And that's truly unfair to the residents that your public information could be just left in debris of that matter. However, Mr. Dixon and Strategic Alliance had a vision to come to this city to bring broadband. Along with Fortune five hundred companies that want to foster that, that would give an opportunity for the city. To have Fortune five hundred companies come here, to have, uh, returning citizens, un, uh, people who are unemployed. Opportunities to get skills and to learn some things going forward in this, um, in this economy. And so I, uh, come to you to speak on the behalf of that because I am very passionate about what happens. To people who look like us, what our future looks like, what it looks like for, uh, the, uh, our youth going forward. And opportunities of, uh, that will avail them. This is going to be a state of the art, uh, broadband center and techno, technological center as well. It is so many people who are participating in this. You have, uh, congresspeople. You have U S representatives, Fortune five hundred companies and other cities and states that are looking at this as a role model. I would beseech each and every one of you to reconsider and to really think about what we could do here for the city. And make this a role model nationwide for the city and to bring more money into the city. And opportunities for people to be able to purchase homes and even create opportunity for people to have businesses in this city. So I, 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 I beseech you to really consider this, to ascertain, ascertain any more information about it. So you'll know. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your opportunity to be able to speak before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is this? Kellum King Izumaya.
Good evening, Council. I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing this letter stating how much of an impact. The CEO of Strategic, Strategic Alliance have had in my life. Jason Dixon, whom I have had the privilege of knowing and working with closely for one year and many more to come. Jason Dixon is CEO of Strategic Alliance Community Development is a uniquely talented individual. And with a powerful desire to contribute posit, positively, positivity to the community, community. By impacting safety and the, and the various es, es, aspect it, it is needed in. One of the first lessons I have learned under his guidance is safety, not only what safety is, but how to implement it. Throughout my time and many more to come, under the guidance and leadership of Jason Dixon, Dixon, Dixon. The CEO of Strategic Alliance Community Development, I have also became proficient, proficient in the capabilities. Of understanding and hearing the feelings of another with his empathy. A great concept of thinking as you're, as, as you're making your way through your path in life. Furthermore, my time under the mentorship of Jason Dixon, CEO of Strategic Alliance Community Development. I have made many great relationships with people around the community. For one, I spoke to the. Governor of, Lieutenant Governor of Michigan Garland G, Gercus, Sec, the second. And made a great relationship with him, whom I met at a wonderful men's meeting. That Jason Dixon, CEO, the CEO of Strategic Alliance Community Development, brought to me along with him as he always does. Moreover, managing my relationships, ma, making sure I don't misuse my relationships. I make, I look forward to many more years of contribution and growth together. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Anthony Martin the second.
I met Jason Dixon back, my first year of college back in twenty fifteen at a community event. We was out there helping a mutual friend. Um, we got a, a chance to chat for a while and he connect, he, we got a chance to chat for a while. And at that time I was going through first generation and college problem, student problems. And when he connected me with somebody that steered me into the right direction, it always, it stayed that way. Since that day forward, he ain't instilled in me nothing but an asset to me, so much to the point that. I, so much to the point that I had to join, seeing Strategic Alliance Community Development in action gives me a sense of. Integrity and aspirations. I couldn't fathom something like this ever being done when, when they first explained it to me years ago. This team has really shown me the importance of teamwork, communication, relationships, et cetera. One of the most important, one of the most important things that they showed me was that. You have to be diligent, staying consistent every day, doing something, spend time on something every day makes anything possible. Working in Inkster's old city hall while having friends and family that are from Inkster and proud to be from Inkster makes me feel obligated to be a part of this. Uh, I can honestly say I wasn't ready for how the place looked. There were so many times we had to sit back and think what's the safest way to do this. The day, some of the days were too cold where you couldn't stop moving. Not really good with spiders. Or speak, public speaking like that as well, but, um, I have been, it was so many spiders in the building. I thought they was guarding it. Last thing I really want, okay, sum it all up. This team has shown me how to be very innovative, empathetic and diligent during this entire process. Bridging the gap to the, the digital divide, Strategic Alliance.
Thank you. Jolika Dumas.
My name is Jolika Dumas and I am president of the National Association of Black Women in Construction Detroit Chapter. And I am here to express my full support for Jason Dixon and his fiber optics training program located at twenty one twenty one Inkster Road. Right here in the city of Inkster. This initiative is crucial for creating opportunities for our roof, our youth in one of the most economically disadvantaged cities in Michigan. Statistics reveal that lack of skilled trades training for our young people. That less than half are even considering a career in skilled trades and only sixteen percent are likely to do so. The gap in training contributes to the high rates of delinquency amongst minors in our community. This disparity study has also indicated that Inkster has fewer infrastructures compared to neighboring cities. Exacerbating the challenges faced by our residents. To recover from this crisis and ensure economic resilience, we must strengthen clean energy manufacturing benefiting workers and families. Building a fiber optic skilled training talent pool is essential for creating a robust clean energy economy for Inkster. By delivering world-class training and good jobs to Inkster workers in neighborhood, we can help jumpstart the economy recovery. This is precisely what Jason Dixon has achieved in the city of Inkster. Navo Detroit is committed to collaborating with the fiber optics training program to recruit members of the Inkster community. Especially our young black girls, I have to say that, and black men. Uh, we aim to provide a skilled trades course that can elevate our community to the middle class through the numerous opportunities being poured into Michigan. We stand ready to take full advantage of the resources provided by this training program and signing up as many residents in, in this community as we can. And offering the necessary assistance for individuals to participate, such as childcare. And whatever they need to complete the chain, the training and secure jobs within the skilled trades and construction arena. We have participated in multiple walkthroughs with the training facility. We are impressed with what he has. And we have been going out, trying to get other members and other businesses to collaborate with the city of Inkster. And we only want you guys to just reconsider this, uh, lawsuit that you have. And let's work together to make this just a win-win for everybody, especially for this mayor that you have here, Mr. Byron Nolan. We don't want to do anything but support any initiatives that you have, but just giving our buildings away. And when we can use them for ourselves to help our people, people that look like us instead of self-contracting, uh, work out. And giving it to other people that don't look like us, that don't spend their money in our communities. So let's at least just give it a, a chance and, and let's try, it's here. We have people from Wayne State. We have, uh, Michigan State University. We have a lot of people that really wanted to contribute to Inkster and thank you for your.
Thank you. Yolanda Taylor Lockit.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I wanted to, uh, have three letters here, but the one that stands out for me is my cousin. Who was an Inkster resident who lived here, went to church here, went to, uh, Peterson Seventh Day Adventist School. And she is, uh, a social worker. She is actually Professor Deja Smith. It is with great pleasure that I provide this letter additional information to the city council. As it deliberates how to support the efforts of Strategic Alliance. city council, as it deliberates how to support the efforts of Strategic Alliance Community Development Corporation. Under the leadership of Jason Dixon, I am reaching out as a community member who has invested in the city of Inkster as a former resident, current constituent of a school and church that are located in Inkster. I had the opportunity to engage at the former site of the city of Inkster City Hall, which has been abandoned for years, to observe the progress and understand the intentional programming planned to support Inkster residents. Mr. Dixon has developed a proposal that seeks to find solutions to current challenges that face in communities such as technology and workforce development. The collaboration development to repurpose unused property into training, excuse me, training, I lost my train of thought, Lord, I'm a. That's okay, I ain't gonna worry about it, I got time. Okay. Mr. Dixon has developed a proposal that seeks to find solutions to current challenges in facing communities such as access to technologies, workforce development, the collaboration developed to repurpose unused properties into a training center, promise to offer numerous opportunities to residents. Our students have been able to learn through the efforts of Mr. Dixon of what community investment can look like when we focus on solutions. As a clinician, educator, and community organizers, I have studied social detriments of health and recognized the anecdotes to improve the mental, physical, social, and economic wellness of individuals and communities. The city of Inkster will benefit from programming that positively address economic stability, education access, quality neighborhood, built environment, and social and community context. I hope the leaders of Inkster will review the proposal and current progress to ensure that the efforts supported by multiple local and national stakeholders continue without disruption.
Thank you.
Professor Deisha Price, Ph.D., LMSW.
Good afternoon, esteemed Councilman Mayor.
Good afternoon.
I'm the chair of the, I'm the chair of the Wayne County Democratic Black Caucus, also former chair of the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists. I'm here to support Jason Dixon and the Strategic Alliance and the initiative that they are encountering. I don't know if many of you know what broadband is. You know what broadband is? It is the, it is the highway that brings you to internet to your home. A lot of us don't know that, that if you got a good internet broadband system, you have lower-cost internet, lower-cost economics to your house. So this center is poised to become the first and only broadband training center in the United States, in an African-American community, of any community in this country. Jason Dixon is firmly behind economic development for all communities. That's part of why I'm here, because I'm representing the cities of Wayne County as a, as a official. One of the things about this center is already accredited, and it's certified by Homeland Security as a facility that can house this, this building, this endeavor. Jason started out, this building, I believe, is 30,000 square feet. So anyone who knows anything about redevelopment knows that it takes longer than 180 days to redevelop or get that type of building back into condition, to working. It was three feet or four feet of water in the basement that I seen personally. Have any of you been out to the site to see this progress and what it's gonna bring to Inkster? You'll be really amazed if you go out there to see what's happened. It's, the air quality is superior, it's been tested, it is, it's in a good condition. Excuse me. One of the other things that we talked about earlier, I heard someone say about economic development, spending money by trucks, garbage trucks, was that what it was? Well, Mr. Dixon spent for, I believe it's called a directional drill, $300,000 out of his own pocket for a brand-new directional drill to make sure your facility would be up to do the work that we're talking about that can put Inkster back on the map again at the forefront of the industry like we were for the automotive industry. This is also a key that can help bring more jobs back with the training of skilled trades in those areas. Thank you.
Peace, City Council, peace, residents. How y'all doing today? Excuse my tardiness, I appreciate the appointment to the DDA earlier. I was leaving a chiropractor herniated disc. But I've been doing recap this past weekend. I was in a coalition with my organization with Kamari McDaniel and her Self-Love Day. She wasn't able to make it today, so I told her I'll do a recap of the event. We had roughly about 60 youth for our Self-Love Day at the Inkster complex this Saturday. We taught yoga, TRE, trauma, TRE, trauma response exercises. We did painting, we did affirmations, we did a networking event with the kids, learning how to make a new friend. They have social anxiety. It was a great event, Chick-fil-A sponsored, along with a lot of other businesses and small donations as well to make the event a success. But I wanted to go into, I've been going to class to be a community health worker. I just had to do a windshield project that I will have to present to my master trainer tomorrow from Detroit Health Department around Inkster, and I had to do a windshield survey in regards to the quality of life and the gaps. I just wanted to read a couple of things from doing an anonymous survey I sent out to a couple of community members in Inkster, a couple of my neighbors that I sent out, and they filtered out anonymous. But what we seen with inside of the report and during my windshield survey was Inkster has a strong sense of community, it's quiet and, and a peaceful environment in certain areas. And this borderline jurisdiction that I'm looking at is from Cherry Hill to Michigan Ave, to Middle Belt, to Beach Daily. It's a positive social interaction with inside of Inkster. But the gaps in services is what I wanted to speak about and resources. A lot of people looked at law enforcement and safety as a gaps in service. Support and collaboration is a gap in service. Economic and educational resources and community maintenance. And the reason why I'm speaking about this, because what I'm hearing today from public comment is a lot of these issues, and there are some resources that's here, resources for us to invest and become that pillar community again. I just want to know if the city attorney needs to speak, why is it out litigations against economic development with inside of our community? And how many cases is against Inkster or Inkster filed against business or property owners with inside of our community for community development? I'm looking to hopefully get our community thriving again, and these are things that needs to know, the public needs to know.
I was gonna say that I received it.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
I received public participation comments from Mr. Charles Blackwell. I'm acknowledging that I received it on Friday. They were dispersed to Mayor and Council, and they will be put into the meeting minutes. Early voting started on 7/27, went for nine days straight. I'm very happy to say we did good. We got out information, communication. I even went to residents that was not able to come in to get their ballots. I took them documents that they needed and hand-delivered their ballots. I waited till they completed them and brought them back in. So it's been a tiring nine days, but it was well worth it, and we're gearing up for tomorrow. I also attended the Ink the Vote, had a table set up with literature. It was very, very nice and very informative, so I do thank you all that put it together, Councilwoman Scott and Councilwoman Rutledge and Chief Jenkins. And I had a lot to put out there, and I'm glad that I was able to attend, and I'm tired. Thank you.
Mr. Treasure. Nothing? Okay. Councilwoman Richardson. Councilwoman Howard.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
I just wanted to announce the Inkster Cobers are having their annual picnic on this Sunday, August 11th, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be in the Inkster Park. Bring your kids down, they're doing a raffle for bikes and all kinds of school supplies, so bring your kids down so that they can participate in the raffle. It's a really nice event. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bishop. Shot, Inkster. Councilwoman Scott.
I might do want to touch on our Ink the Vote event. One, I want to say thank you for everyone that came out and attended. We appreciate the support, and we had a lot of great speakers come. It was a nonpartisan event, but we did get a lot of people that came, you just got to like meet the candidates and kind of voice some of your concern. Regarding that, we have some T-shirts, stand up, show the card. We have T-shirts for sale, and then we're hoping to do another event before the general election, so we're hoping the end of October. We can partner with a lot of community events, so please reach out to us if you all are interested, and we want to have more T-shirts, food, camaraderie, but also really hold a lot of our candidates accountable before we vote for them, and also express the importance of just voting in general, and I think this event definitely highlighted just the importance of voting, and you got to hear from a lot of candidates once again. So get out and vote tomorrow, I'll be working the polls as well. We also need volunteers, so if anyone's interested, please let your young people know to get ready for the general election, because it could be all hands on deck, so.
Great. Mayor Proton.
Yep. There's anybody here who still needs to sign up for Co-Rit or having any issues, we'll be here afterwards to help y'all with that. That's all I ask.
So, all right, just real briefly, I want to make sure Michael Kelly knows our thoughts and prayers are with you on the loss of your brother, Wenzel Kelly. Definitely been thinking about that. City Attorney Andrews, might disclose your situation, but thinking about you also. And summer camps come to an end this week. We have field day on Wednesday. If you want to come hang out with the kids, to bounce the house, have some fun, all type of activities going on, it'll be Wednesday, 10 to 3. And Thursday will be graduation or the completion of camp. They'll receive their certificates, and that'll be our last day. Then we'll get ready for the backpack giveaways, back to school, and so everybody get ready for that. So come check out our kids, they had a good time this summer, they wore their ducks out for sure. No question about that. But I don't have anything else. We have motion adjourned. We probably moved to second discussion. All those in favor say aye. Polls now.
It's a good time, gee. Be home, and yeah, I got a.